And it is five o'clock. So with that, I will call the special meeting of the West Richardson City Council order for the workshop of July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. And with that, I'll ask Stephanie if she'd please call the roll.
All right. Thank you. Brent Gary.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
And Stoker.
Here.
Councilmember Bloom, Councilmember member Fettow and Mayor Protem Brink are all absent this evening.
Have motion to excuse those council members and Mayor Protem Brink?
They're moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very thank you, counsel. And with that, we're gonna have Ron from On Point, On Point, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Ron, Ron, how you doing this evening? Ron's gonna join us, but I'm gonna go ahead and let Eric introduce Ron kick things off. So Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Tonight, we've got the pleasure of hearing from Ron. Gailey, who's with On Point, he's helped us put together the survey. He's worked with many cities doing this type of survey work. And and has a big, long history. I think I've shared that with you guys in the past as far as his. His prior work that he's with, I think it was Pepsi or Coca-Cola, one of those big. Big brand name companies as well as T-Mobile and Washington Mutual. So he's done a lot of this type of work, a lot of. Survey analysis and reporting back to inform different companies and cities. And so. This survey that we've done has definitely provided some good information. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ron to dive a little deeper for us.
Thank you, Eric. Greetings to you all, counsel. I'm gonna share my screen. I hope I have it. It looks like I have the ability to share my screen. So we're golden. All right. Hey. I have this up. I believe you can all see it, correct?
Yes, Ron, we do see it. Thank you.
Okay. You know, I have done a lot of cities and West Richland stands out as one of the stronger cities. And it's always a pleasure to report positive results. I have had the displeasure of having to report some unfavorable results routinely, and I am just glad to be able to present really favorable ones to you. Just a little bit about the survey. We conducted this survey. We have six hundred and sixty two people in the sample. I think we would have gotten more. And I know that we're going to do this again, and I presume we'll get quite a few more, but someone shared the their own personal link. To the survey from an email and we got quite a few people taking it. Where where it appeared like they were all coming from the same person. And 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 we salvaged what we could from it, but we lost a few. That is just, we'll make that clear in the future emails that you should not share this with friends. And disable that capability. But I will want, I do want to say that seventy eight percent did come in from emails, sixteen percent came in from Facebook. Five percent came in from your website. So we got quite a few. And any results you see will be statistically different if they're three point eight percent different from one another. So whenever you see a number that's about four percent different from another number, then that's statistically measurable in this study. And and it came in pretty well on in that case.
Ron, before you continue, what I'm gonna ask counsel to do is take notes of any questions that you might have. Let Ron go ahead and roll through. His presentation, then we can go back. We go back to slides or anything. That way we don't lose Ron's flow. So I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier, Ron, but I wanted to touch base with counsel in regards to that. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. We have in the study a summary which I'll not go through now because it'll be better to go through the actual results with you. But we did, one of the things we did in the survey was present a map. And ask people where they lived on the map. And we got pretty good representation across the areas. Some of them are smaller, I'm sure because there are just fewer people living within certain residential areas. But we have pretty good representation across the map and discussing this with Eric. He felt that it pretty much represented where the populations were. And the beauty is, is now we can look at any area and see how they did compared to others. Also demographic wise, you have a really good distribution of of demographics. A good distribution of age groups, younger and older. Pretty good representation of female and male, and I do want to clarify that females almost always. Respond at a higher rate than males. We I have a hard time getting males to respond. But forty percent is a pretty typical. So you're normal there. And so there that that looks good. We have a good distribution of people who have been in the city. For a short amount of time, such as one to four years. And a long time, twenty years. So you have a good distribution of old timers and newcomers. We have a good distribution of those who have children or no children. Fifty percent don't have children in the home, but fifty percent do, and most of them tend to be on the younger side in your city. And then as far as race goes, we have ninety percent who took the survey who said they were white. I will say that in almost all cities, I do struggle to get minorities to take the same, to take the survey at the same rate. As as others, and it's just been a little bit of a battle. And so you may probably have about six percent Hispanics living in your town. That wouldn't surprise me, and that would be normal. If as as to what we get, participation just happens to be lower there. With Hispanics and Latinos and the black and African Americans. So but moving on, the first question we asked was, would you refer the city to a friend? And we gave them a radio, you know, they could pick anywhere from zero to ten. And if they gave a nine or a ten, we say they're a strongly positive person. If they said a seven or an eight, we say they're somewhat positive. If they say a six or a five or a six, we say they're somewhat negative. They're not really negative, but somewhat. And then if they say a four through zero, we make them strongly negative. And what I like to do is take the two positives, somewhat positive and strongly positive. And the two negatives, add them together and then subtract the positives, the negatives from the positives. And we've done that, and that gives you a score of sixty eight. The reason why I like to do that is when we track over time, or when when we compare cities against one another. That score is very helpful, and your score of sixty eight is very positive. I've had some that are stronger, but not many. And so you do quite well with your positive results. Moving on with positive results, I want, we first asked, why did you give that rating? So some people gave a rating. And it was positive and some gave a rating. It was negative and some gave one in between. And so you'd expect to get a mix of responses. And when we got all of the responses, six hundred and sixty two of them, we looked through them carefully and we grouped them into themes. And the themes you see here are, you know, you had quite a few different themes that were spoken of, and somebody could be in two places. So somebody could say, I love this place because it's safe and secure. On the other hand, I'm worried about. The road next to me, right? So if somebody could be in two or three, even four places, more if necessary, if they. Spoke on a variety of topics. But but what I want to point out too is we have the smiley faces here, and. Because it is safe and secure, they love, and they would rate West Richland where they did. And because it's neighborly and. Very friendly, a community atmosphere. So you have four positives mentioned here. As to the reasons why they would recommend West Richland to a friend. They love the small town feel and rural, and it doesn't come up until you get safety, security and crime problems. When they mentioned, hey, I I hope that it remains safe. Most of them are are hopes that it remains safe. Do you get a negative? And then you get schools and kid friendly, and then you get growth and congestion coming up. There may be losing the small town feel. But you have a lot of positives before you get to a negative, and that's not always so. In many cities I've encountered, they we start off with two or three negatives before you get to a positive. And so really positive results. And also I'd like to show that we can go to the next page and see the actual results. So let's say we want to look at at comments about amenities, what they think about parks and pickleball and playgrounds and so forth. We can go here and just in the top here, click on the amenities. The positive amenities, and those are the results that come up. And we can, we can read those. And also I'll just give you it as an example. The beauty is, is you can see these amenities. And you can see a little bit about the person who said it. So the third one down, this is a safe place to raise a family and have all the amenity and all the amenities are very accessible. This is a thirty five to forty four year old male who's lived in the city one to four years. And this person happens to live in area eight. And so so your parks department, your police department. The various departments can very easily click on something and see what it says. I'm not gonna go into detail on this one. Well, wait, I'll save and go into a little bit more detail later on on that. The direction of the city. For West Richmond, most people feel that things have improved in West Richland, or at least stayed the same. So that's really a high number, seventy eight percent. Some, a few feel that it's gotten worse. And I'll talk with that in a second. Most feel that the city's going in the right direction. I don't see a right direction this high very often. Your right direction score is quite impressive at seventy three. It's very common that people feel you're going in the wrong direction. But yeah, and you do have some in your city who do feel that you're going in the wrong direction. But your right direction score is super high, as is your score about, and that's this one compared to other cities, is West Richland much better, somewhat better, about the same? Or somewhat worse or much worse. And in your case. Very few said that it's maybe worse or much worse than other cities. And I'm telling you, if they did, they probably came from a very small town. Which might be true. Or they lived in a rural area that has changed. So you're doing quite well. Now, the one thing I want to mention is that we can look at this by area of the city, by by the area where they live. And and some areas. Feel the right direction is even stronger. Area two and area seven. Area one over here is more likely to feel that things are maybe going the wrong direction, as is area four. Over here, a little bit more likely to say that it's going in the wrong direction, but still. I, when I say you have they're more likely, this is still better than other cities that I encounter. So there is maybe some room to improve. And some things to be aware of, but you're in a very good place. The same thing, it's actually very common that people who have lived in the city longer. Are more likely to say that we're going in the wrong direction, and that's the case here. Where anybody over five years is a little bit more likely to say, I think we're going in the wrong direction. And people who are newer are far more inclined to say, hey, we're going in the right direction, and I really like where things are going. And that's the same with the city that I live in, by the way. I'll, I'd like to mention that the people who have been here a little longer. Are far more likely to say things are going in the wrong direction. I think they're voices that need to be heard, but it is kind of a. It is a situation where things have changed on people who've lived there longer. It's the same thing with have things gotten worse or improved, where you see gotten worse, growing a little bit. As time goes on. Now, I mentioned other cities from time to time, and I'm going to do so now. So we have done quite a few cities. And your refer a friend score at sixty eight is quite high. It's it's really good, and your improved score is quite high, kind of in the middle a little bit, but on the higher side of in the middle. I've had towns where they were negative, right? Where more people said I would not refer a friend than who said they would. And I've had some that are pretty negative about referring the city to a friend, but you're pretty strong. Really solid in this upper area. I had a city in Texas that gave me, like, everybody loved it, and that's unusual. But that's a city that was pretty much built out. And they have very little growth, and they the concerns are really managing the existing residents. And not really taking care of a lot of disruption that comes from growth. But I want to mention one other thing, and that is your going in the right direction score is even higher. Right? So your friend, refer friend scores high, and you're going in the right direction scores higher. And over on the right hand side, I hate to bring in, bring in bad memories of math or anything, but. Over on the right hand side, it's common that you you show a line chart like this. And whenever I see, where are we now? Well, how would you refer a friend score at a high level? And then going in the right direction at a higher level, I say this city has a good slope. You know, a really positive slope, and they're in a great location. And I've had some cities that have a very high score. But their slope is tends to be a little bit negative. Right? And then that's area for concern. They need, they have some things, even though things are going well now. The citizenry is a little bit concerned. And I don't see that with you. So I see you at in a good, strong position and stronger, right? And hopefully you can continue that positive momentum. And I hope that makes sense for you. Now, the strength of our survey is to find out what's most important to people. And then how they rate the city on a variety of things. So first of all, I'd like to mention. Here, the city parks and the park amenities were your two highest among the the facilities and events. An Earth Day and the community garden was lower, right? And what I like to see for a city. Is the important things are rated higher. Right? And they're pretty strong. And in this case, you're fairly strong. With what people think about your parks and open spaces and pretty strong. Although not quite as strong with your park amenities and so forth. So you're in a good place. And there's potentially a little bit of room to improve for those areas. And maybe something to look at the comments for to find out what the suggestions are for your parks and open spaces and your amenities. And we can see the senior center here is low, and I know that your senior center was closed during COVID in talking with people. And so this might reflect very much the feeling of where the senior center, where they feel about it right now. But there's a lot of momentum, I would say, among people to improve your senior center. And to make that a little bit better for how they are doing. And then some that are rated lower, like your community garden. It is possible you can do this. You may want to focus on things that are more important to more people. If you can, and then squeeze out a little bit of time for the community to garden if you wish. But I would focus on the upper things, at least initially. So my personal thoughts about that. Regarding benefits. Regarding benefits, the benefit they like most about West Richland. Is the small town feel and a great place to raise children. And I realize these are things that you don't necessarily provide as a city, but these are things the city residents would love you to support and encourage. And so it's pretty high. I noticed here though that are a lot of them are quite similar. People had a hard time choosing between the benefits. And 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 so the small town field did come out in place. Do you know, I noticed in cities when the small town feel, when there's a space here and the gap is a little bit high. I notice in most of those cities that there's usually a little bit of room to improve on trails. Usually there's a little bit of room to improve on parks, right? So that people have a place to go to enjoy the small town field or the area that they're in. Oftentimes when growth comes, the the ruralness of the city disappears, and people are kind of a little more stuck. Right? They can't get out and enjoy this countryside like they once did. And so it may speak to that need, and we'll look at that a little bit with the comments. And then a fair cost of living, I don't know what you can do about that. It's an issue that they wish could be addressed. I don't, you know, that's a tough one, I think, on anyone. But they do mention, I will mention here too, and it's worth pointing out, quality shopping. And there's a bit of a gap here. It's not the most important thing to many people, but a lot of people felt, hey, this is an area to improve. So I'll point that out. Growth and development. In in most cities that I I I come across, hmm, it's a little bit slow loading. In most cities that I come across, this is an area where there's a fair amount of frustration among people. And it's true with you, too. And so you have a lot of ratings where they're a little bit frustrated with the growth and development. But let me talk about this. First of all, you have your top three. And you know, it is wonderful to see that your top three are your best three. The three most important ones is where citizens feel you're doing very good or okay, and maybe there's a little bit of room to improve. So. My kudos, you know, kudos for having having nailed the things that are most important when it comes to growth and development. But it does seem. If I look at there, there's, there is a desire to attract more restaurant business. And and it's not rated very low either. It's pretty high. And even to attract more retail business. And so your efforts to attract those while preserving your parks and trails and so forth. Like if you can balance that intelligently, you will be doing, I think, what your citizens are hoping you'll do. So I'll just point you, this is a positive slide for you with a clear clarity on where to grow. Safety and security. I like to point this one out. I noticed earlier, and I'll go back to this refer a friend rating. That safety and security problems were rated a bit high, right? And so you might think, well, we've got a problem here with our police department. But let me go back down where we were at again, once again, so that's in safety and security. And I want to point out something. So most important in safety and security, there are a lot of things that are important. Most important is crime prevention. So they're hoping that it remains safe, and they're asking for neighborhood safety patrols, which is almost the same thing. Just a way of executing against safety. Your police services are actually rated really well. So there's no complaint really about your police other than they wish to have more. Right? And they wish to have a little more proactive approach with it. And I don't know what you're able to do, but this actually speaks more to prevention and patrols and not to a problem. So much, although there's a little desire from some traffic enforcement, so I get some of that. So I think you're doing pretty well in your police department, and there's just a yearning to keep it safe and secure. And to make sure that the town they live in will stay the delightful, safe place that, as you'll remember, that they rated as being. The number one thing that they would recommend the city to be. Safe, quiet, peaceful, and so forth. So I think this is just a call to keep that going. And to ensure that the safety, sorry, remains and it stays a safe place. And I look forward to coming back and talking with you more about that. Operational. The operational numbers are coming in pretty well. They do want to maintain and expand the parks and trails, and it looks like there's some room to grow. And maintain the community appearance. That's an interesting one to have rise so high. They want it to be a beautiful place, I think, and that's coming through, and they want to have that be that way. And they also are asking. For future oriented city planning. I think these, when it comes to operational things, these are wonderful problems to be at the top. It does speak to a mayor and council that thinks ahead, that plans ahead. That assures the city remains, you know, having excellent parks and trails, looks nice, right? And they're asking for these things. So. You know, that's, I think you have a lot of support. To maintain a positive direction for your city. Of course, there are those who think you ought to manage the code inquiries and violations a little bit more. And I think that's a good thing to do and emphasize wildlife protection. Those are important, but they're not other, it looks like you're focusing on the right things here. Now, this page I'm gonna show you now is the most important page of all. And what we do is after everybody has gone through the five areas before. And they picked out the facilities and events that were most important to them, and the benefits and the growth and development. And the safety and security and the operational issues, they've all picked out ten things that were most important to them. And then we ask them to look at those ten things and pick the most important three. And that helps give you, instead of five pages to look through to kind of prioritize, it gives you one. And and on this page, we take from the fifty attributes or so that you had and only show you the top twenty. So there's thirty attributes or so missing from this page. But you're able to see the top twenty attributes sorted in priority order. And if you're a wise city council, you'll look at your top ten. And you'll try to focus there on areas that people care about, and then maybe extend down a little bit as it makes sense, right? And and I wouldn't have thought, when I look at it, I wouldn't have thought, well, I look at this, and I they say ensure the infrastructure can support growth. So they don't want the roads and the infrastructure get ahead of you. They want you to wisely plan for that, and you're doing pretty good. You know, so this is one just to keep your eye on. There is a desire to attract more restaurant business. The police services, it's really important to them, and they rate you pretty well. The small town feel, it's really important to them, and they don't want to lose it. There's a little bit of concern here, and they do want to manage the growth and density of the city. So those are great things to do. But as I look down here, I just see ensuring the streets can support the growth. And make sure the tennis and park amenities are in good shape. But you know, there are a lot of things we've already discussed. Maybe there's a little bit of attracting more business and maintaining and maintaining the parks and trails a little bit. But I would just say if you focus on your top ten, maybe down to fifteen, that you would be well served as a city council going forward. And we'll come back to this. I'm sure you'll have questions. We did ask about a few things that we did not ask people to prioritize. We didn't ask people to prioritize the sewer services or the water service or utility billing, but we did get ratings for them. And as I look at the ratings that we got, they're pretty good, you know, they're pretty good. Particularly your utility billing, your sewer and water, really strong. If there is a hole or two where people said poor, I'm very poor. Maybe there's memories of snow removal that didn't go so well. And there are certainly some feelings about code enforcement. So those are a few things to to be aware of. We can look at comments about these things a bit later on. But for the most part, I haven't seen it this positive as you have in your city, but maybe some areas to look at. We did also ask what departments they had contact with. And forty two percent did have contact with various departments. Some had contact with the police department, there were the city clerk, and then a few had contact with the mayor, the least amount had contact with the mayor. But they had various contact. If they did. We asked them to give ratings. Now, there was a discussion, I shared this with Eric and a few people earlier. And they said, hey, I wonder if the people who marked city clerk may have been talking about the front desk staff, and that's probably true. And so what we'll do next time we do this is assure that we separate the city clerk from the front desk. So that's clear, but your ratings are pretty good.
Ron, they're they're all laughing at me because apparently I don't rate too well, and then we had that. We had.
You know what? I noticed that. I noticed that, and I did want to point it out.
Yeah.
But either they love the mayor or they don't, and it's clear. And but you know, what I like about, and let me bring one thing up. What I like about this study is we actually have six hundred, and I forget the total amount here, how many? We have six hundred and sixty two respondents. And the beautiful thing is. Or the wise thing to do is to use this to look out for the needs of the many. And not the frustrations of the few. And it's it's good to note the frustrations of the few, but you're wise to 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 focus on the needs of the many first. And then work on the frustrations of the few as you can, right? And that will steer your city in a really sound, consistent direction. And Mayor, I think you're doing a great job. You actually, I mean, they love you or they don't. So I think you're a little bimodal here.
So it's kind of, it's kind of like, kind of like your wife, you know? No, it's, it was funny because. I support my staff and and sometimes people don't get the answers that they want, and that's you're spot on as far as the determinant or the analogy that you you used in regards to that. So. I got thick skin. I've been doing this for a few years, so we're good.
Good on you.
Thank you.
Good on you. Good on you. Okay, so anyway, you can use this to look for any issues or areas where you do want to focus. Maybe you guys can help your mayor out. But I think uh things are looking pretty good. Okay, now this is the main part of the survey. And after this main part of the survey, we asked a few questions that were optional for your city. And we asked about um the importance of a variety of city events. So the Veterans Day Parade, the the Wednesday night. Wednesday in West Community Market and Food Truck Night. So there are a lot of things that they love. Um, there are some things that uh that that they are are not as invested in. It looks like the Geo Cash Advance and Time of Remembrance. I I, when I spoke earlier to Eric and a small team, I did mention that this none of these, I've done this in several cities. Is a little bit higher than I typically see. Usually I'll see eight, six, ten percent or whatever who say none of these are important to me. But you have quite a few. You have like a li- a few more here that say none of these. Now, it could be several things. It could be that there are other neighboring community events that are that are that they're more invested in. Or it could be that there's um, there may be some benefit of trying to figure out how to broaden the appeal of some of the things that you do do. Right? And so I think I I don't have any suggestions for you. Um, and uh, you know, I talked about a few things with, I think I hit the police chief. We were talking about a few things. But you're doing quite well, and maybe you do see that there's an opportunity, maybe to uh interact with a few more people. We also asked about new investment priorities. I love this slide. Um, it's a very good slide. The one thing I love is there's, let me freight, look, read the the way it's phrased. Consider the ideas below. Which ones do you feel would be worth using city revenues to develop and maintain? I like that question because it requires city revenues to develop and maintain, and I also like that very few people said none of these. So the ideas that you put before people tend to to work with various people. They tend to, you know, people say, yeah, I think that's a good use of funds. And so we already saw that there was a high desire for quality restaurants. Right? And that came off number one. Now I realize the city doesn't bring in quality restaurants themselves. And that you're not in charge of that, but you have, you do have ways of incentivizing or 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 encouraging it. And so it looks like that you have support for that. Uh, and then road pay, uh, road pave pavement maintenance, like, yeah, there's a lot of support for that. Multi-use trails. So you have a lot of support for trails, and I love that. Uh, your public safety, we already talked about that before. It seemed like some proactive efforts are welcome. And then there on out, some things are a little bit lower, but you have some things that are very supportive of the things that they mentioned before. It looks like your ideas are hitting a chord with people and that people like some of the suggestions that have been put before them. Um, I'm going to go to fireworks and cannabis. I know this is kind of a contentious thing. Uh, right now regarding the fireworks, fifty-three percent said no change to our current policy. Twenty-six percent said it might be wise to create limits. And twenty-one percent said there might be, it might be wise to ban fireworks completely. So you're kind of split there. And the same thing kind of goes for cannabis sales. So there are those who strongly support it. Or somewhat support it, and there are those who strongly oppose or somewhat oppose. Um, I will point out a couple of things for you, just so that you can see the numbers. If I go to older people, people who are, let's say, fifty-five and older. Um, when we do that, we see uh a little bit higher uh ideas for banning fireworks completely. And also strongly opposing cannabis sales. And when you go to the younger respondents, those who are, say, eighteen to, I'm going to go up to thirty-four. You know, when you go to when they're younger, you get kind of the opposite thing, right? You get a lot of people who. Um, don't think there's a need to change the for the policy at all, and certainly not banning it. Very few, some do that. And you get far more support for cannabis. So there is a little bit of that going on where it's an age thing. Um, also time in the city. It's, I think it's interesting. We can look at the people who haven't been in the city very long. What do they think about this? They're also a little bit more likely to say, ah, I don't think we ought to change things. And I don't see there's much change in the support for cannabis. And if you go to the old timers, um, the old timers, people who've been there fifteen years or longer. Um, uh, uh, you know, it it, you go almost fifty-fifty on the cannabis sales and uh kind of where a a little bit. More on the no change to the policy. So. Time in the city is not so much a factor as much as age of the respondent. You'll see that coming through. All right, the last question of the survey was, do you have anything more to say? And of the six hundred and sixty-two people, three hundred and eleven said, yeah, I do. And so they made a comment. And then we have the comments here, and it might be worth your while. Uh, when you get a moment to to look at some of the things that they mentioned. Um, traffic improvements were mentioned, just, so this is like, they have now thought about some things and they give some some thought about it. So there were people who said, hey, I just wish that we could address traffic issues, and some said, I wish we could address the speeders. Those are combined together. And if you want, we could separate those, but those are combined together. Parks, public spaces and pickleball, they there were requests to improve that. Um, and uh, and a little bit of, can we maybe. Slow down the growth here around here a little bit, so we get that. Now, we can go to the detail and we can look at those things specifically. But uh, we won't take the time to do that here. And with that, I've taken um thirty-five minutes or so, and and I feel it's time to pause. And uh, take your questions and see what you would like to explore further.
Okay, and uh, thanks, Ron. That was a great presentation. And then what uh? What I want to share with citizens as well as council, the uh, the dashboard that Ron used and all the avenues that he had. Uh, that you can go through, this will all be posted on the city website, and citizens can do exactly. What you saw Ron do tonight, so they can go through that dashboard and really dissect this survey. Also, keep in mind, this is the first time that we've had Ron do this survey for us. I'm I'm. I believe over time as we do this annually, or uh if we have a an interim survey. Uh, in mid-year of 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 once a year, every spring, I think we're going to start seeing more and more people participating. There's things that we have learned in the the advertising, the promotional process of it. Uh, of what we can do better to to gain more people to take the survey. Uh, and and what I really like about this survey is. It was so open and generic in multiple avenues that there wasn't one particular focus, and it was very broad. With a lot of opportunity for opinion that can be drawn from different age groups, how long you've been here. Different locations in the city. So, Ron, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate that. And before we open it up to council's questions, I'm going to ask Eric if he has anything else he'd like to add as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just exactly what you just reiterated is the survey results will be available on our website tomorrow, so. Council and any resident can get on there, or anybody can get on there and pull up the data and and see what it all has to say. Um, lessons learned, just to point out what some of those are, um. I don't believe the apartment complexes, all of the residents within there probably got a invitation if they weren't on Facebook looking at that or. Um, because they typically don't, they're the well, they. Likely not the one paying the utility bill, so um, and we sent out the the email to everyone that has. Electronic service for their utility bills with their emails set up. So we sent out an email to all of those folks. Uh, but apartments, so what we're looking at doing next year is um sending out postcards with a QR code. That they could go in and scan and and be able to do something like that. Um, and then also we're going to look at potentially. Uh, translating into Spanish so that uh we can read more people that way. Um. Some of the key takeaways that I saw from this is that uh, we're going to have some instant results from some of these things that they had. Uh, for instance, the senior center was closed when we were taking the survey, and it opened up after it's get closed. Um, so I think that'll be a instant. Win for for council. Um, and then trails, we're going to have some new trails coming up too, so we're, people will be able to see that. You you listen to to things, even though we're already in the process of taking care of it. Um, and then new businesses, uh, they, you know, that's one of the. Big points that they made. They want to see new businesses, new restaurants, and you can see those coming up out of the ground there at the Paradise and Bombing Range. And Belmont Business Districts. So those are some great, great points, um, that will be instant wins, I would say, with the council to show that you were listening. And then, um. You know, I, again, the survey is. A vast amount of information for you that will help council as you. Go in the future and to um develop your budgets and your priorities. I would highly recommend that you take a look at these. Uh, I know staff will be as we present the budget to you at the next biennium. Um, and look at the priorities and and talk to those points as far as what the citizens are coming back and telling us. And again. Spring of next year is when we're looking at doing the the next surveys that's be very similar to this one, so that we can get another pulse from the community. And that will be right in the middle of our budget planning.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. Council, uh, questions for Ron? Councilman Smart?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, it'll be. So, um, Ron, I was just curious, you made a comment at the very beginning about, um. Eat responses due to pings from an email, and they might have been suspicious or not. Can you elaborate on that? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
That question, and then also your your opinion on. The statistical response, you know, the the number of people we have in our community versus the six hundred and sixty-two.
Yeah, so, so, um, yeah, I'll talk about that. So. Um, we do, we do need to make it clear that um, you should not share the link that you got from an email with someone else. I it's in, it's intended to be u- unique, and I I have the ability to make it so that a person can only take it once with her email. But I don't have that ability and also to have it open on Facebook where anybody can take it. Like, it's kind of like a a conflict with the multiple delivery methods that we have. And so I I think there are ways that I can work around it, and I've never encountered it before. So this is like the first time I ever had it where somebody. Shared it, but but what happened is is almost a hundred and twenty people. Uh, took the survey that was someone else's, and what happened is is. Upward pop that person's responses, the first person's responses, and then they were changing the responses when it was going through to be their own. And it was just not quite fair, right? I mean, it wasn't quite a pure response survey. And I I apologize that it happened. I had never seen it before. Now I know. And we'll make sure that it never happens again with with reminders and so forth. And I can, I can also do it where I have two surveys. Two separate surveys, one that I have emails, and I can make sure they only take it once, and then a different one. Where it's Facebook, but then it also creates extra work for me, but it can be done.
So, yeah, and so a quick follow-up on that. So, um, when, I know when we talked about. The design of the survey, you know, before it was released. Um, you had mentioned the ability to. Compare responses. I think I brought up a concern, like, how do we know there aren't people in New York? You know, responding to our survey, and you you mentioned E, uh, IP addresses.
The IP address.
Um, and also just looking at the nature of the responses and comparing them. Was there any evidence that in the hundred and twenty responses? That they were all of the same opinion?
You know, there there was, there was some evidence of that. There was some evidence of that, and then there was also, but there were a lot of them where the answers were partial or. You know, because they would see something that was already there, that they didn't change it. There, you know, there were a a fair number of those things, and I was uncertain. Whether or not they could be trusted. And so all of those that I couldn't with confidence verify as being trustworthy. Um, all of them were removed. And so it took us a little bit of extra effort and time to get up to the six hundred and sixty-two that we did have. Uh, as a result of that, and I think those people wanted their results to be heard, but they just received it from a backdoor approach, right? And so, so we'll fix that for next time. And then you asked about statistically measurable results for your city. And remind me, the population, aren't you around sixteen, seventeen hundred, a thousand, I mean?
Seventeen, five.
Yeah, so, so normally on a survey uh of 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 any population size. A population, a a response rate of four hundred is enough to give you good measurable results. And a and a response rate of six hundred is solid. Yeah, I mean, that's a really good response rate. I like to get more, uh, but the only reason I like to get more, the results won't change. But it does allow you to dig deeper into the comments. Like, if people are talking about parks, or if they're talking about. Some topic that comes up repeatedly, but not a lot, let's say only two percent of the people bring it up. Still, with a lot of people, you can look at fifty or forty people who talked about that topic, and it's very insightful for you to dig deep onto a topic. Um, because we have a lot of people. And here we'll find that if it's a small uh sample sized issue like. Um, like, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna look at the overview of anything more to say, and as I look at it. Um, some people mentioned snow removal, but it was only three percent, right? Well, three percent of six hundred is not going to be a gr- a huge number, right? But if it were three percent of, let's say, twelve hundred, then it would be a much more reliable number to look at the people who comment about snow removal. And that's the only minor benefit that we would get from it, but it's a benefit, and I like that benefit. Because you, as a city, want to dig deep into certain topics and understand what's going on.
Thank you for that. So just a quick follow-up again, um, of the responses we received, you, so you can tell. Where they got the link from, and I'm just curious, did did they? Can we discern how many people responded due to email versus Facebook versus um. Uh, announcement, that was on earlier slide, I just missed that.
Yeah, and I'll show it to you. I'll show it to you. So uh, on on the source page, I have a page here. And seventy-eight percent responded because of email. And sixteen percent from Facebook and five percent website. So, you know, twenty-two percent were not email. And then I could tell indeed, uh, the the uh offending E, like, I have a lot of clarity on who responds on email. Uh, I don't release that publicly, but I can use that to assure that we have clean data.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Then one statistic that I wanted to share before we move on to Councilmember Moran's. Approximately seventeen thousand five hundred. People live in the city. Obviously, we have little babies to adult seniors such as myself. Uh, and and a statistic that I found that was kind of interesting was. We only had four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three people vote in the last election. And we had six hundred and sixty-some of the survey. So, you know, it kind of do the math is the differences, and what are the voting ages? How many people voted? Well, that's kind of the same scenario, I think, with with surveys and how many people want to take the time. Make it be right in front of them, like it like voting, and they don't do it. So they have.
Yeah.
An extra effort in the aspect of making an effort on the survey.
For your city, though, we should have had, we should have had over a thousand in my view. And when I do it the second time with other cities and the third, I like the second time I normally get another twenty percent. I would think with yours, we would get another thirty or thirty-five percent because we had to remove some that probably wanted to take it. And uh, and and then, uh, so I I just don't think a thousand or or plus or twelve hundred or so is is unreasonable at all. And I would expect it the next time.
And so with with our lessons learned and things in that nature, uh, I think we, Ron feels comfortable that we'll get there, so. Thank you for explaining that, Ron. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Um, so the first question I was wondering was going back to the email. So you were saying that we would have to have. It, I guess I'm not quite understanding, because if we had individual links set out. Via email, but we also had links on Facebook and the website that were not individualized. I thought you. Said normally you would only do one of the types, whether it was individualized or not, is that?
Let me clarify that. So, so. When I send out an email, each one is a unique uh invite. Every single one is unique, and it's because I have my system uh send those out, and so I can track. Whether a person comes back in. So a person on the email could come in, take the survey partway, leave. Come back and it would pick them. come back and it would pick them up right where they are and they could continue to the end, right? So that would happen if they did it on email. And I have a, and so I can tell those. And then on Facebook, I just have a, a single link that anybody can take. But it has a little identifier on it that says this is a Facebook person or this is a website person, right? And so I just have a little identifier on it, but it is the same link every time. And so those are the ones I have to be super careful about on IP addresses, just to make sure we don't have duplications and so forth. Uh, a- and so that's how that works. And, uh, I don't know if that answers your question, the way what you had.
It, it does. Um, I just, it, it sounds like it might be better to not send out individualized, just because it seems like, at least in this instance, so many had replied, probably somebody said, hey.
Somebody forwarded theirs and says, please take this. That's what happened. And so I think probably the next time what we do is I, I, I can set up two different, two different, uh, links, uh, two very different links. And I can just make it so that if anybody responds on email, it can only be taken once. Right? I mean, I can set that up and it'd be, it'd, it'd solve the problem completely. It does mean I would need to merge the files on the backend. That's the only thing, right? So it'd take a little bit of work on my end.
That, that's what we pay you for, Ron, right?
Yeah, that's kind of like, you know, and, and, and I, I just think maybe I'll raise my price like five bucks. No, I, I think, but, but, but it's important that it be right. Like, I mean, I, I really feel bad that it, that happened and anticipated. And so, you know, and, and we'll just make sure that we indicate that sharing the link will make it invalid or something like that. And and we can do that kind of a thing.
Okay. Um, yeah, I would just, I'm, I'm wondering how many ended up getting unfortunately thrown out because of that and just in general, how many got thrown out?
No, it, um, um, I can tell you. Hold on. I'm, I'm not sharing my screen, am I? I'm not. I'm, I'm looking behind the scenes. This is the Oz looking behind the curtain right now. And, um, and I'll be able to tell you.
Powerful, right?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm here. I removed ninety-two.
And that was from that individual email or that was just in general?
No, that was from that email. And I know, I, then, then there were a few people, there were a handful of people, very few who were out of the country and I removed them.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other question I was wondering is when we were doing the benchmark, I for the page about the benchmark, how many other cities were included and um, were those recent or is that over the course of maybe a decade?
No, no, every one of these is in the last year. Um, every one of those is in the last year and, um, and I didn't count, but I think there's seventeen that I included by the time we did yours. And every one of them was a city between, um, let's say ten thousand and forty thousand people. So it's, it's, it's a reasonable benchmark to you.
Okay, council, any other questions for Ron? Okay. Ron, we thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, if we have any more questions that may arise that council brings forth, uh, we'll certainly ask Eric to reach out to you, uh, so he can provide that out so to any of the council members.
Yeah, and it's a pleasure working with you. You're a great city. It's, uh, thank you.
You can ask us and we'll find you an answer. No? You can, you can. Yeah. Uh, now it's thirty-seven percent of, of this line, right? Okay. Now, now the workshops. All right, council, uh, if no one more questions for Ron, we'll go ahead and let Ron finish his evening. Ron, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, uh, council, anything for Eric or amongst yourselves? Thoughts?
So I'll ask a quick question. Are we, is there a, uh, is there a plan in place? You said next spring, uh, is that a, is that a for sure thing? Do we have a contract on that or is that a just a, a potential tentative plan to, to run another?
Oh, we're going to do this for the foreseeable future every spring. So.
Just remind me, I think we, we decided on a, like a three-year contract. Okay.
Yeah. So we've got a three-year deal with him right now and, and as long as it's providing good data and, and we're able to utilize it and, and again, to educate council on good policy and decisions, we'll, we'll continue to use it and hopefully that'll be for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, I would, and I would just reinforce what we just discussed, which is that I would hope that we'd get a better return. I mean, that's in, in my humble opinion, although Ron says six hundred is solid, six hundred is a mere fraction of the forty-six hundred rooftops that we have in the city and, um, just like to find our way to get that better publicized and better response, you know, so we need to be thinking about that as I'm sure we all will. Um, I wanted to mention that the general response that I heard from people after having taken the survey was that they were generally so about half the people I talked to, and I probably talked, I don't know, maybe eight or ten folks, right? Um, w- we're saying like they weren't satisfied with the options they were given in the questions. So, uh, I don't know, maybe it's just the circles that I'm in, but, uh, they were like, well, where's the option to not do anything? Cause I don't want to spend any more money, you know? And so I looked back through the survey and it did. You know, there, it, it really didn't, you know, in many cases, give an option of like, stop the works, just leave it the way it is, kind of. So as a general comment, no specifics here. I'd have to go back and look at the individual questions. But I would just say that that was what I heard. Um, and I mean, cause some people are just like, we love it the way it is. We don't want you spending more money here, there or anywhere else. Um, and I mean, that's just what they said. So I mean, that's just a sentiment which I understand is not a scientific uh, or statistical quantity of people, but so I mentioned that. The other thing I heard was that, that it was kind of long. I mean, I don't know how long it took people to do this. I think it took me ten or twelve minutes, maybe. And I don't know, maybe we were pushing the length of, you know, maybe, maybe we need to make it five minutes. Just another thought. That's all I got.
So, um, I had actually heard more people that were just having issues with where they had done it. And I spoke with you, Eric, about it, where they had said that, you know, they thought that they did it and it was counted, but then they got something saying that over the first, what was it, hour or so, there was an issue with the link? Was that related to the email or is that a different thing?
I believe so. Yes. Yeah. That was right there at the beginning. We had a window where there was a problem and Ron was able to go in and get it ironed out and fixed.
Got it. Um, and, and to what you were saying, Councilmember Smart, um, I think there was one question at least that did give the option to not spend on anything um, that he had mentioned. And that was the one where he said that nobody really, like, other than a very small amount had said not to spend money on anything. So that was interesting. I really want to dig into this more, um, when we get the link up on the website. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention was somewhat in agreement, though, with what you were saying, where it seemed like it was a bit constrictive when it came to responses to give. It was good to have those responses so that we could have like a, a very good percentage of this is the exact number, the exact answer they gave because that was all that they were given. I'm wondering if there might be a bit more wiggle room with having things be a bit more where they could fill in some with, or, or at least put comments. I know that there were a few places for comments, but not many. Um, overall, I know that it looked like he was saying something where the majority was over twelve minutes to take it? Is that accurate from that slide?
I would have to go back and take a look at that. I don't remember off the top of my head, but they did have, after each section, they did have the ability to go in and enter their own thoughts and, and input and write it out, right? So if they, if they didn't want to spend many more taxes, they had the ability to go in there and say, you know, cities, stop growing, stop moving, don't do anything more. We don't want to hire another person. Let's stop spending money. Um, let's die on the vine. So that's, that's one of the things that they could have put there. As an option and put it in there verbally in a, in text.
Right? Yeah, no, and that's kind of what I was remembering as well from when I took it. Um, I'm curious, are those comments the ones where we would be able to actually go through and see what they had answered?
Absolutely. It's all online there. You can go in, you can filter it. You can look at all of them. There's one in there that says that I'm corrupt. It's kind of an interesting one. Um, it calls me out specifically.
For you liked.
Well, I think it was because of a plat, uh, a plat hearing that someone didn't like the result of, but, um, so there's, you can go in there and see each individual comment that individuals made and it actually calls them out by their survey number, the survey person number X is going to have their response in there. So, uh, you can go in, filter those ha- as you may, or you can just go through and you can export this information so that you can print it off and take a look at it or just have it on a PDF and then go through it on your own. Um, it's very, very intuitive that way, very good information to be able to have. And I think Ron did a great job of putting together those summaries to help, you know, group those up so that you can see it a little bit clearer, more clearly. Uh, because as you go through things, you think, well, half the community thinks this and half the community thinks that. But as you put it into data and actually measure it, it gives you better statistics and statistical data to work from.
True. Now, I, I think that in general, it it was well done. I'm hoping that next time we get a lot more people to participate, but so far it's pretty decent response.
I think so. It's their first one, right? So I mean, there's a lot to learn from the first one, just like the racetrack when they had their first race out there. They had a lot to learn from that and they did, and they turned it around and now it's, it's run like a pretty good machine, oiled machine. That's our intent too. So we looked at this and we went, well, you know, we probably didn't reach every individual resident and we, that's our goal is to touch every single person with this survey that to give them the opportunity to take it. Um, just like voting, we want every individual to have that opportunity. So we mail out a ballot to every individual person. So while postcards don't give a huge return, according to Ron and, and his work that he's done. Um, I still think that that would be appropriate is to go ahead and send out that individual in their post, in their mailbox because there we've, I've had multiple people, even an individual council member's spouse come up to me and tell me that they never saw the survey. Um, so I, I can't help that. But it, it is all out there and it's, it's a matter of just trying to reach and touch everybody, but it's, no matter how hard we try, we're still going to be told that we didn't do enough.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of comments. Um, I, I think the comment of, um, to where there should be the capability to say no, let's stop spending all, that, that's not really life and reality and where we're at. Real, I mean, really, y- you have to keep moving forward. Yes, there's change. Maybe not everybody likes it. But you can't just stop where we're at and die on the vine. Um, is my thoughts, you have to move forward. That's life. And, um, so I think that the survey was excellent in the options that everybody had and how much time they wanted to spend on it was up to them. I mean, if they want to write all these extra things, which is always very interesting, um, to get all those comments too. So, um, I think that, I think that it was done excellent. I think everybody that I've talked to um, really, um, felt that they were part taking it be and answering the questions, everything. So I, I think it was a good thing the city is doing this. And I think it's a good thing. We have a three-year agreement for it. Um, the other thing is, so the next step for council, I mean, is this come back up like in our August fifteenth council meeting? Do we take up bits and pieces of, or we just go in and study this or what happens after this to the survey? Is it a guidance for us, how we move forward on our, on what we're doing and improving or staff or what, how is it used, I guess, to benefit the city?
Sure. So how it's used is, like I said, we're going to be posting it on the city's website so that council and any resident can go out and take a look at it to see what the responses were and be able to dissect it down to different categories of demographics or whatever they just so choose. Uh, for council, there, there's nothing to be approved after this, right? It's not like you guys are going to pass some resolutions saying that this is the end all be all of surveys. So it's more there just for your information. Um, and we're hoping that definitely next time we should get more responses. I think people, now that they know that we're doing these surveys, we can advertise it and people will be looking for it as we continue to do it. People will be looking for those. Um, so our hope is, is again, that we'll double the number of surveys that we did this time and then be able to continue to educate council as far as what are the residents' priorities? And I really like what Ron said in there, you know, you don't want to, uh, cater to the few because they're the ones that are showing up and, and pounding the table. Um, when you've got data that shows you, here's what the many have to say. In my experience in twenty years of working in public, working in public sector is that you have the naysayers that show up and pound the table and say, no more, no more, no more. Stop raising my taxes. We don't want this or whatever the case may be. Um, and those that are okay with it with what's being proposed or whatever is happening, they don't show because they just figure that, well, council's going to go ahead and move forward with it because it's on their agenda and something that they're looking at. So, again, this kind of data is very helpful. It also will provide council with the priorities as far as where to spend tax money, right? Are we going to go ahead and spend it on trails? Are we going to go ahead and spend it on recruiting new businesses? And what does that look like? And we can, as staff, we can put together proposals as we go through the next biennial budget to say, okay, here's what the SFAs are and those will, this, these surveys will definitely input into those FSAs and say, okay, here's what the community is saying. So here are the SFAs that we proposed to council that we work forward with. And then you guys can tweak or modify or whatever from there. But I think that's really the, the key takeaway here is, is that these surveys give us a good view as far as what the residents want. And, and their priorities as far as what are we doing? Um, you know, should I go ahead and work towards a firework ordinance? I think that that response tells me that it would be foolish to do so because it would be um, not profitable. So I, I think that it would be, these kinds of things help inform us as we move forward with different uh, priorities and actions.
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, so one of the things that was a little surprising was the residents', um, response toward, uh, infrastructure, water, utilities, roads. I, I thought that was kind of actually amazing that that we saw our residents saying, no, that's at the top of our list for priorities. And I would like to know more, like what, what is it that's pink, that's making them think that they that, I mean, is that just a general, uh, like my personal belief is, is one of the main reasons we have a city is to provide road sewer water, right? Um, police, uh, but, but that was interesting that it made the top of the list. And so I wonder if there's a concern specifically about water, because it seems to me the roads are in pretty good shape. I'm sure somebody could complain somewhere, but, uh, but you know, the roads seem pretty good. It's not Spokane.
That was gonna say.
Sorry, sorry Spokane, but the roads have been terrible. Yeah. But so I just, and I don't know, maybe it was the, so it is, I wonder if there's any detail there. Did you see any comments that, uh, I suspect it was water, like is water available?
I haven't really dissected into it, but if you remember, and, and I'm trying to remember back to the presentation, is that that was a priority for them. And then as when they asked, how are we doing? It was, we were doing well. That there wasn't a whole lot that they were asking us to do, that this is a priority. We need to make sure that these things are being taken care of. But you're doing a good job at it. And so, and you can go back and look at all this. Like I said, tomorrow, Stephanie's going to have our city webpage updated with this link. You can go in and you can filter through and, and, and manipulate the data however you want. Um, and you can hone in onto those types of things. And I think that just as a, as a, from my point of view, we have the Lewis and Clark Ranch that we're moving forward with and the planning effort of that and what that is going to do for the city. And we issued a determination of significance for that project, which required them to go through this big environmental impact statement. And we're in the middle of doing all of those things and And we're in the middle of doing all of those things and Roscoe's done a lot of analysis with his consultants to figure out, are we going to have enough water? Are we going to have enough sewer? Are we planning ahead for these things? And when someone flushes the toilet, is it going to go away? Because that's what the expectation is, is when you turn your faucet on, there's water, it's clean, it's, it's potable. When you flush the toilet, everything disappears and you don't have to worry about it ever again, right? And so those things are the important parts that I think that they see as important. And they think we're doing a good job at it. And I believe that we are as, as we're going through these different planning efforts and seeing the different needs and. The, the good thing as well is that as we're looking at the Lewis and Clark project, for instance. And any of the other subdivisions that have been coming in, we're putting the cost burden on the developers to make sure that they're paying for that and not the residents.
So the thought that spurred was whether or not we might be well off to um. Maybe make some brief announcements, publication, uh. Bill inserts. Paragraph. That just talks about when we have this figured out, when we have the. The water numbers, for example, figured out. I know that, you know, like you said, Roscoe's doing this analysis and hiring. Consultants, um. Sounds like maybe with the intro, the, the residents may be interested in hearing that, you know, hey, we use, you know, twenty million gallons a day or whatever, and we're going to have. We're going to double the size of the city. We've got this new development, it's going to add a thousand homes. Whatever the numbers are and we expect them to take this much water and. This is our plan for how that water's going to be provided, you know, and not, not in gory detail, but just to say, hey, we've got a connection with Richland. Um, and we've got more than enough capacity, you know, and just belay that concern if it, if it is a concern. And similarly with other. With other things that we do to address maybe the points that come out on a survey like this of, you know, parks and trails. Like you said, there's going to be some advancement in trail system. I'm not sure where that is. I, I guess I'd like to know. Um, and, and if that's the case, I mean, that's another, that would be obviously just a thing to put in the insert, right? To let people know, hey, we. We checked that box. We've made the progress. We've got that under control. So just saying that this, this survey sort of pointed out some. In my mind, some of the things that I wouldn't have thought necessarily that the citizens were on top of or. On, in the front of their mind and since they are. Let's, let's just keep up with communication, right? Make it go both ways. We're going to ask them for information to make sure we. Give it back to them, right? So. That's all. Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this workshop at six thirteen. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Thank you, Stephanie.